Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Tonight is our June 1st, 2021 electronically held special meeting of the Dearborn Heights City Council. This is a virtual meeting. At this time, Madam Clerk, would you please take roll call?
Yes, just to remind your council members to state your current location, your city and your state. Dave Abdallah.
Here. Dearborn Heights, Wayne County, Michigan.
Zuhair Abdalhak.
Dearborn Heights, Wayne County, Michigan.
Mo Baydun.
Hankun, Mexico, and I'm here. Hola.
Robert Coniston.
Here, Dearborn Heights, Wayne County, Michigan.
Denise Malanowski Maxwell.
Here, Dearborn Heights, Wayne County, Michigan.
Ray Muscat.
Here, Dearborn Heights, Wayne County, Michigan.
And Tom Wenzel.
Here in the great city of Dearborn Heights, Wayne County, Michigan.
Madam Chair, you have a call.
Thank you. At this time, I'd like to have Councilman Wenzel lead us in pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic of America, which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, free, just, and for all.
To everyone, please be seated. First item on the agenda is the agenda approval.
Madam Chair.
Councilman Coniston.
I move that the Dearborn Heights City Council approve the June 1st, 2021 electronically held special meeting agenda as submitted.
Support.
Support.
Supported by Councilman Abdalhak. Is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 Those opposed? The ayes have it. Next, we have public hearings and comment. This is on items on this current agenda. You have a limited two minutes. We need your name and where you live. Anybody have any comment on this? Okay, let's move on. Next, I have reports from the mayor. First one is residential purchase agreement for 24127 Courier.
Council Chair.
Councilman Muscat.
I move the Dearborn Heights City Council approve the residential purchase agreement for 24127 Courier in the amount of $105,000. In addition, authorize the mayor and a city clerk to sign the agreement on behalf of the city as outlined in 8A.
Support.
Support.
Supported by Councilman Abdalhak. Is there a discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? The ayes have it. Next item is residential purchase agreement for 24077 Courier.
Madam Chair.
Councilman Abdalhak.
It's Abdallah.
Abdallah.
I correct the name.
You are up. He's right above you, so I'm reading right above you.
No, it's okay. If you call me Abdalhak, it's an honor for me. I will let the Dearborn Heights City Council.
Good answer, yeah.
I'm a salesman, anyway. Okay, I will get the Dearborn Heights City Council approve the residential purchase agreement for 24077 Courier in the amount of $100,000. In addition, authorize the mayor and city clerk to sign the agreement on behalf of the city as outlined in item 8B.
Support.
Support by Councilman Baydun. Is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 Those opposed? The ayes have it. Next item on the agenda is new business. This is adoption of the 2021-2022 Corporate Fund Budget.
Council Chair.
Councilman Muscat.
I move the Dearborn Heights City Council adopt the general government fiscal 2020-2021-2022 balanced budget in amount of $54,354,915 as outlined in 13A.
Support.
Support by Councilman Abdalhak. Is there any discussion?
Madam Chair, that should be 54 million.
Yes, that's.
54 million, 354,915 dollars.
Support.
Are you still supporting it?
Yes, yes.
Okay, Councilman Abdalhak supports it. Is there any discussion? You know, I just realized there was one question I was going to ask and I didn't ask it during the study session, and it's a simple question. As to why there is only 50 pages in this year's budget? And last year had 55 pages. I noticed some pages are missing from the actual budget. Can anybody answer me why they were excluded?
What?
Mr. Director Jamal.
Thank you, Madam Chair. You did ask me that, and I tried, but it was time. You know, you need to run. First of all, I want to thank you and thank everybody who worked to try to put the 2411, you know, Ms. Philippi on the council agenda. Actually, you know, you did great. He sent us a, on his mother, 18 years old mother, saying, "Thank you for all of you, for the mayor. Offers us, all of you, try to put, you know, and include that on the budget, on the agenda tonight." Unfortunately, his mother-in-law in the hospital, he couldn't get there, they don't allow him. So it's going to be on the 8th. So thank you for all. This is going to be great. I received a great email from him. Second, you know, to answer the question, it's not dropped. It's just like this year, it's not mandatory. It's actually what we call, it's statistical analysis to give you an idea, you know, how much the budget, how much the balance was back then, how much the balance is going to be in the future. It's all expectations. You do have the budgets, you know, in the past three years in front of you. You can see the, down there, you can see the balances, you can see the expenditures. If you need further, you know, a trial balance and try to give you in the future, maybe next week, more, more analysis regarding that particular missing page we were. I will work hard, Madam Chair, to produce for you, you know, the expectation of what's going to be the budget, you know, like balance next year, how it's going to look, what we were, you know, in the past. When we, when we get together as a budget team, we'll make the effort to answer it. We'll make the effort to show you, you know, what those pages are. Are they mandatory? I didn't see anywhere that those pages mandatory. I only see that mandatory is the actual numbers you see in that 2021-22 column, you know, budget. All other analysis are good to have. We did not have enough information for me to support putting this out. I couldn't find the information I need to be, you know, like secure to say, "Here's what we're going to have next year." I don't know. It's too many.
I'm thinking, for transparency reasons, this shows our expenditures, our revenues, exactly where we're getting, you know, what is going to Act 345.
Yes.
Our analysis of the fund budget and the corporate fund budget. And then another page I found that was missing was the cable TV peg fund reconciliation page is not included in this one at all.
Yeah, responding to that particular one, the PIG are separated. We have the PIG separated, segregated. We are reconciliating the account because there was some left in the general fund and some put, you know, by our previous treasurer, Honorable Sir Abdalhak. Actually, he wasn't involved in that, you're honorable, and now we're going to add to that fund altogether. So we have approximately about $1.3 million. We tried to find where they are, and we know they are there because we did the calculation. So it's segregated. It's a support fund. So there's no need for, you know, to just show that we are in compliance. We are in compliance with Act, with the PIG. As you, in the past, required, we segregate the fund. If you ask me how much we have, I tell you right now, the treasurer can tell you. Regarding the Act 345, you have it in the budget segregated. There's 11 accounts. One revenue account and one reimbursement account in the revenue 101,000 section. And there is a line account in the 200 account. Okay, they are clear, and the 200, you know, general fund expenditure sections. And there is another one, you know, at the end of the budget, it's Department 956. It's the Act 345, Department 956, that actually it is the total of, you know, the administrators' cost. And they are like, you know, our CPA generally administrating both. And some reimbursements from the Act 345 to the controller, 10% of his time, and to the deputy comptroller, Ms. Williams. So Act 345 is already explained explicitly in the budget body. So that's also for your concern about Act 345. In terms of the trial balance and trying to give you an estimation of what the fund is going to be, we will give you next week if you like. You know, we'll prepare one for the whole council, explain to them what's with our fund when we meet with Plant Moran. I hope I answered your question, Madam Chair.
Comptroller, were you aware that these pages were missing?
Yes, my mic is on, right?
Yes.
Yeah, no, I mean, yeah, I wasn't involved in last year's budget as pretty much nobody here was. So I mean, we looked at what was required, and we looked at things that we're currently working on. We explained them to all the different people. We've talked in the various department meetings and study sessions. And yeah, we submitted what we needed to submit in the shortest amount of time possible, made sure everything was accurate. And, you know, I mean, like Director Jamal said, if there's anything additional you need, we can always, you know, put it together for you and get it to you whenever you need it.
Okay, thank you. Is there any further discussion in regards to the budget? Okay, all those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? The ayes have it. Next item on the agenda is adoption of administration fee resolution.
Council Chair.
Councilman Muscat.
Are we going to go through a roll call for each one of us taking one of these at a time, or as we've done in the past?
Do you want me to do a roll call on the budget?
Well, not a roll call. What, the 13B, each one take one of these recommendations as we go through the line like we have in the past? I do one, then the next person.
I will leave that up to the clerk for advice on how to do it.
Okay, we'll have to, we'll have to go through each one of the motions and approve each one of those. If that's what you're asking, yes.
Yes, by each individual person.
Yeah, so, well, you don't have to, as everybody's unanimous unless you want a roll call. That's up to the council.
Well, it's not a roll call. Previously, we would, when we were in a live session, we started at one at a table and
Oh, I got you.
Each one person took one and kept going.
Yeah, if somebody votes and all they do.
You just want to take turns on the motions. That's acceptable.
I had trouble with my printer. Somebody can skip me and if everybody else, who has it printed up?
Okay, we can make the motion, we can make all the motions individually by, as we've normally done then.
Okay, go ahead.
Madam Chair, I don't have printout of them, too.
I think, yeah, Councilman Muscat, we don't have printers like we used to.
Dave Abdallah and I do.
If you'd like to, I can tell you what the subject is, and then you can go ahead.
Okay, go ahead, Councilman.
I'll make the first one, and if need be, I can make them all, okay?
Yeah, you know what? Go ahead, since you have it printed out.
Okay. I move that the Dearborn Heights City Council adopt the library fiscal 2021-2022 surplus budget in the amount of $2,435,432 as outlined in 13A.
Support.
Support by Councilman Coniston. Is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. Go ahead, Councilman. Next item.
Council Chair, I move that the Dearborn Heights City Council concur that the tax levy for the 2021-2022 fiscal year be set at 7.9948 mils as outlined in 13A.
Support.
Support.
Councilman Coniston, is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 Those opposed? The ayes have it. Go ahead, Councilman Muscat again.
I move the Dearborn Heights City Council concur that the 8.8926 mils be levied to finance the voter approval of Act 345, fire and pension plans for the fiscal year 2021-2022 as outlined in 13A.
Support.
Support.
Councilman Coniston, is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. Go ahead, Councilman.
I move Dearborn Heights City Council levy an additional 2.0986 mils on a taxable valuation for finance, garbage, and rubbish disposal for fiscal year 2021-2022 as outlined in 13A.
Support.
Support.
Support by Councilman Baydun. Is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 Those opposed? The ayes have it. Go ahead, Councilman Muscat.
I move that the Dearborn Heights City Council levy an additional 1.8810 mils on a taxable valuation of public safety as approved by the voters of the city of Dearborn Heights for fiscal year 2021-2022 as outlined in 13A.
Support.
Support.
Councilman Coniston, is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. Go ahead, Councilman.
I move the Dearborn Heights City Council concur that the millage approval for solid waste disposal by the electorate in May of 2000 be levied at .9404 mils as outlined in 13A.
Support.
Support by Councilman Coniston. Is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 Those opposed? The ayes have it. I'm sorry, Director Jamal, this is not the time to be speaking. Okay. Next item. Go ahead, Councilman Muscat.
I move the Dearborn Heights City Council approve the 2021-2022 lump sum budget for the 20th District Court in amount of $2,186,372 as outlined in 13A.
Support.
Support.
Support by Councilman Baydun. Is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. Go ahead, Councilman.
I move the Dearborn Heights City Council levy an additional .8639 mil to fund the city department for libraries, including new improvements of library buildings as approved by the voters of the city of Dearborn Heights as outlined in 13A.
Support.
Support by Councilman Abdallah. Is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. Go ahead, Councilman.
I move that the Dearborn Heights City Council approve and levy additional .8933 mil to fund the city libraries as approved by the voters of the city of Dearborn Heights as outlined in 13A.
Support.
Support by Councilman Coniston. Is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 Those opposed? The ayes have it. That's it, right, Councilman?
One more.
Okay, go ahead.
The 1%.
That's right. I see it now.
I move that the Dearborn Heights City Council adopt the administration fee resolution as follows as outlined in 13B. Now therefore be resolved that the city of Dearborn Heights approves the imposition of the treasurer of the city of Dearborn Heights shall administer the imposition of property tax administration fee pursuant to MCL 211.44 with respect to taxes to be collected for the summer 2021 and winter 2021 only, with the stipulations that the imposition of any future property tax administration fee will require a new resolution before it may be imposed, and that the fee shall be used to offset costs incurred by the city of Dearborn Heights in assessing property values, collecting the property tax levies, and the review and appeal process. As outlined in 13B.
Support by Councilman Abdallah. Is there any discussion?
Madam Chair.
Councilman Coniston.
So it's the percentage that's from the document that was prepared. The motion itself doesn't name a percentage, unless I'm missing something.
It does.
It doesn't have the 1%, Council Chair, it doesn't state it. Is there a way we could add that in?
It does, it does.
The chair. It does. It does state it, Councilman.
Is it?
Yeah.
It's not in the motion, but it is in the resolution that was presented.
Okay, thank you. Yes, it's correct.
It is definitely listed in the resolution, and it will be certified.
I do have the resolution. Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, do you want the resolution read?
I need a support.
I just read.
Support by Councilman Abdallah. Is there any discussion?
Madam Chair.
Councilman Abdallah.
Earlier in our study sessions, we had discussed, I had at least made a suggestion, that we make the amount lesser. Are we voting on just the 1%? Or is there any council people that are interested in making the amount, lesser amount at this particular point?
Well, at this time, okay, at this, excuse me, point of order, at this time, we do have a motion on the table. We have to vote on that, and if it fails, then we can come back and decide a different motion.
Okay, thank you.
Councilman Abdallah.
I would recommend that we go with the 1%. If there is any money left over next year, we should, you know, look into it to reduce that 1%.
Okay, anyone else? Any more discussion?
Madam Chair.
Councilman Wenzel? Oh, no, Councilman Baydun. Go ahead.
I'm going to concur with Councilman Abdallah on this one. I think we should be leaving it at the 1%. I think by next year, we can go back, and if we're able to put this in a, you know, in a separate restricted fund, where we're able to see what went out and what came in, and how much is left over, instead of going into a general fund, and maybe we can make it our priority with Plant Moran, and maybe the administration to, and the treasurer's office to take part in that, and making sure that we're able to look at that and say, "Hey, this is how much we spent, this is how much we have. Are we going to do it again? Do we need it again? Or is there an actual surplus where we didn't need to collect that much?" Are you the rest of my time, Madam Chair?
Councilman Coniston.
Briefly, Madam Chair, thank you. I'm going to vote no for the full 1%. I'm sure the city's ledger and the software can track how much comes in from the 1% and what the expenses are, if it's in a separate account or not. But that's all I have to say.
Okay, Director Jamal.
Thank you, Madam Chair. It's kind of clerical, you know, mistake. We did approve the, we did approve, the voter approved last year, the renewal of the taxes. It's not 2020, it's 2020. It was actually approved to be on the, on the voter. Last year, it was recommended by Administrator John Reilly that the 0.19%. It's just a clerical. If you want to keep it that way, we can come back later on and amend it. It's okay. It's a clerical. The amount is correct, but the year is not correct.
Point of order, Council Chair.
Councilman Muscat.
We have a motion on the table. We need to vote before the council members vote on this.
Yes, 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 I agree.
Okay, let us take, go ahead with the vote.
Yes.
Okay, thank you, sir. Any further discussion before we vote on this? All those in favor say aye.
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 No.
Those opposed? Okay, we need to take a roll call vote. Councilman Muscat, what is your vote?
Yes.
Councilman Coniston.
No.
Councilman Abdallah.
Yes.
Councilman Abdallah.
No.
Councilman Baydun.
Yes.
Councilman Wenzel.
Yes.
Malanowski Maxwell, no. It does pass. At this time, we will turn it over to members of the public for comments from council members. Does any council members have any comments at this time?
Council Chair.
Madam Chair.
Councilman Muscat.
I have said yes to all of them, but I will be making some phone calls to some people tomorrow or Thursday on a few items, because this document is fluid and can be changed, and my questions will be answered, and I will be bringing forward the appropriate resolutions or motions to be looked at. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Baydun.
Madam Chair, I just want to thank you guys for, oh, thank you for choosing me, Madam Chair. I want you to know I voted yes on that. And I just want to make it very clear, the less thing that we want is to not being able to have that fund, that restricted fund in our accounts, and then saying, "We don't have enough. We need to go back," or, you know, what other avenue do we look back at? But I also will be making some phone calls similar to Councilman Muscat as well, and just getting a little bit more answers on that as well. I also would like you to say, I would also like to say, I probably won't be here for the public comments. My laptop is dying, so if I get cut off, I just want you to know, because my laptop's at 7%.
Okay. I have Councilman Coniston.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just briefly, I want to thank the administration, the comptroller, Budget Director Hassan Jamal, for answering my questions and for the good job everybody did. Some, a lot of new faces, a lot of work to be done, and overall, an excellent job on the budget, so thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Abdallah.
Yes, I want to go back to the 1%. It is basically earmarked for specific things by law. The budget of the treasurer, it's close to $600,000. Then portion of it goes to the assessor and portion goes to the tribunal of taxes in Lansing. So basically, we collect around $740,000 roughly a year. I believe the 1% is very valid, and next year, if we have anything left over, I would encourage that we reduce that amount next year. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments from council members? At this time, we will open it up to announcements in the community. Go ahead, Mayor.
Thank you, Council Chair. Again, I want to commend the team, my team members that actually worked on the budget, my budget team. They worked tirelessly. They actually put in long hours. Some of them worked came on the weekends, Saturday, some of them came in on Sunday. I know, I'm going to name them, so Director Jamal, Comptroller Jawad, Chief of Staff Hernandez, Director Elizabeth Perry, and Deputy Director Shante. I know some of you came in late.
There'll be more buddies.
I know a couple of them were here till 11, 12 o'clock at night, working on the budget. Thank you so much. I appreciate all your help and your dedication to the city and also to making sure that this is done. I know it's been a challenge with, from what happened last year with the shortfalls, with all the, we're supposed to be getting a lot, the revenue loss, and some of the stuff that we're supposed to be getting from the state share revenues, that was way down. And again, I want to commend my budget team for putting this thing together, and like I said, they went way and above their call of duty on this one. Thank you. I appreciate you.
Thank you, Mayor. Any further comment or announcements from the community? Next, I will open it to public comment. You state your name, and you have three minutes. Is there any public comment tonight? Okay, I guess this. Okay, I guess this concludes our meeting. Do I hear a motion to adjourn?
Move the, move the, adjourn the meeting, Council Chair.
Support. Support by Councilman Coniston, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. Everyone have a good night.